Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two Gardner, Kansas Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. You all please rise and state the questions with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move into roll call, starting on my right.
Commissioner Ham here.
Commissioner Hanson here.
Mater here.
McNear here.
Commissioner Juneman here.
Coram is present. Moving into the consent agenda, all matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any member of the public would like to have an item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by McNear with a second by Hanson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries six, zero, one outsend. Regular agenda item number one, Breckenwood Creek rezoning Z dash two-two dash zero-four and associated preliminary development plan, PDP dash two-two dash zero-two. This is a public hearing item, approximately zero point four miles north of one hundred and seventy-fifth street along Kill Creek Road. Do we have a presentation this evening from staff?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Again, this is Breckenwood Creek, there's zoning and the preliminary, associated preliminary development plan. This is a development that you guys have seen before. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the project, but it, they started to, they actually even have their preliminary plat approved through the commission, and they've had a final plat for section one that has been approved. They started to submit in their plot plans for, to get their building permits, and unfortunately that's when we found some discrepancies. And we do have some issues with, you know, the compact housing in the R-two districts. So the reason why they're back before you is they're requesting a couple deviations in order to build the structures that they want to build. So without further ado, I'll continue further. Again, this is the entire site, as you can see with the, on one hundred and seventieth terrace, there's already existing planted lots. Again, we're going kind of in reverse, rezoning and preliminary development plan to address the entire subdivision rather than addressing each individual section over and over and over again. The property includes thirty-eight point six acres of land located approximately a quarter of mile north of one hundred and seventy-fifth street along Kill Creek Road, which is also north of the Gardner Municipal Airport adjacent to Saint John Highlands Two subdivision. Site was annexed on September fifth, two thousand and re-zoned several times, but has remained undeveloped. This is the current surrounding zoning around the property. And again, they're going from R-two, they went through a rezoning before you in the past. They're going through the RP-two, again, to allow for, and I'll get through the deviations a little bit later. Again, for the general public who doesn't remember when this was rezoned, this is for single-family housing. It's not for anything greater density than that. This is the PDP preliminary development plan, and which is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved by the commission back in two thousand and twenty. Number of lots and tracks remain the same, one hundred and thirty-one lots and two tracks. And it's also going to allow for the extension of the Kill Creek Trail on tract, I think that was track A. Proposed, the rezoning and plan development is to allow the developer the ability to construct marketable, single-family homes on their lots. Under the strict guidelines of the current code, the proposed homes would not be allowed to be constructed on lots as planted. Several deviations, which we'll go over later in the presentation, are being requested as part of this rezoning to a planned development. Here are some of the examples of elevations, just three, I think they have about five different elevations that we've seen so far. Again, we had to stop on the approvals of the plot plans and building plans because they did not meet the strict guidelines of the code. Again, with the comprehensive plan, this meets the housing variety, supports ongoing investment in attracting new residents, helps with all income levels, other housing objectives, to develop housings and support services, allow seniors to age in place, promote infill residential development. All these are different items that are within the comprehensive plan that we went over again way back when it was zoned R-two. And as part of low-density residential, which is depicted on the, on the future land use map, again, this, this type of housing does meet that requirement. And we all need to go through this. Staff findings on the preliminary development plan, the plan reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles by providing a variety of housing types in the area and community, fiscally responsible extension of utilities, and location of nearby, with location of nearby employment corridors. The benefits from any flexibility in the standards allow the project higher end amenities for the residential, including garage structures. The project will benefit the general public, health, safety, and welfare of the community by, by providing open space and utility extensions. Actually, one of the utilities extensions that are being done is the connection to allow for looped electric and also water from the Saint John Highlands subdivision directly to the west. These are the deviations that are being requested. First deviation is from section seventeen point zero-seven, zero-five, zero-C frontage design, design standards, neighborhood yard, hardscape allocation. The standard for this frontage type is five to twenty percent, and they're proposing forty-five percent. Staff recommends approval of the deviation on this one. This would allow the double, double garage. Section, second deviation requested is section seventeen point zero-seven, zero-five, zero-C frontage design, design standards, neighborhood yard, sidewalk connection. For neighborhood yards, they require a four-foot wide sidewalk between the front door, front entranceway of the house, and the sidewalk out front. These are really set back a little further than your atypical neighborhood housing. Usually the front yard setback is going to be reduced down, usually right around ten feet to fifteen feet. These really are more of a suburban context, but even though they are a smaller lot, they do set back a little farther. We thought that the four-foot sidewalk from the house entrance to the sidewalk would look a little odd, and also you'll see from another deviation as to why we just want a sidewalk to the driveway. Third deviation, same section seventeen, zero-seven, zero-five, zero-C frontage design, design standard, neighborhood yard. Access width limits, the standard is fifteen percent or twenty percent max, and they're proposing twenty feet for just a blanket for all the lots. The lots are fifty feet wide, fifteen percent of that would be right around eleven feet. And in the proposed development, the local standard street type is being utilized, which prepares the terrace frontage, I'm sorry. Frontage type permits access width limits of fifteen percent for lots and twenty percent. However, the subdivision plan out having fifty-foot wide lots, which will allow only seven and a half feet, not eleven feet, sorry. Staff recommends approval of this deviation. Fourth deviation, seventeen point zero-seven, zero-five, zero-four, zero, specific building type standards, detached house neighborhood. The standard is twenty-five percent of facade if front-loaded, up to forty-five percent if setback fifteen plus feet from the front billing line. It's no limit if side-loaded. Again, this, the strip that really is of concern is the northern section of this, it's so narrow, and in order to get the houses on a fifty-foot wide lot with a double garage, it's, the math doesn't work, they're requesting forty-five percent. And the fifth deviation, seventeen point zero-four, point zero-one, zero, street design, local neighborhood sidewalks. Standard is five-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of the street. The proposed is five-foot wide sidewalks on one side of the local streets, which is one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventieth terrace in Cody Street, and then on both sides of the collector streets, which is Madison and, can't remember the name of the other one, but we have two collector streets, or Kill Creek, I'm sorry, Kill Creek. Sidewalks adjacent to the existing subdivision will extend the sidewalks to connect with all existing subdivisions that come into this development off of the, the Saint Johns and then also the subdivision directly to the east of this. The proposed development will have sidewalk connections again to all subdivisions, and with construction of a ten-foot wide Kill Creek Trail throughout the development, the residents will have ample connectivity to all the surrounding areas. Also, because of the depth limitations of lots within the subdivisions, all utilities are being located in the front yard, which could cause conflict with the location of sidewalks along both sides. That's also the reason why we didn't want the direct sidewalk from the front entrance down to, down to the, maybe a sidewalk that doesn't exist. Staff recommends approval of this deviation as well. Staff recommends, the plan commission recommend approval of the rezoning from R-two to family residential district to RP-two planned to family residential district, as proposed based on the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. And if we have the applicant this evening, if you'd like to add anything before we open the public hearing, so please come forward, state your names and address for the public record.
Todd Allenbrand, Payton Brookway, four-twenty-six South Kansas Avenue. We don't really have anything to add, but we're here, you know, I'm here representing the owner, Craig Brett Holmes. But if you have any questions, we're here to answer what we can, and we agree with the staff report. Thanks.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Individuals limited to three minutes or so of time, those representing in a group, five to seven minutes of time. Please come forward and be heard if there's anything you'd like to say about the site. Seeing nobody coming forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that we close the public hearing made by McNear with a second by Juneman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six, oh, in favor, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, planning commission discussion, I'll go ahead and start, down on my right with Commissioner Sosa, anything you have for staff, we do have the applicant here with us, any questions?
I just have a question. What's the basic difference between the R-two and the RP-two to me, this thing? And I just wanted to kind of, what's the main difference, applying to family residential?
Essentially, no difference at all, the zoning is, is the same, it's the R-two district, the key is being added to make it a planned district. Since there are deviations needed, that's why we would go to a planned district. Under the R-two, they would have to meet all those requirements to the strict level of what the code says. So the ability to grant deviations, we have to have a planned district to do that. So that's why this is coming back to you. When the plot plans, as Bob had explained, when the plot plans came in and we took a look at the elevations and the siding, as they were applying for their building permits, that's when we realized that a number of deviations were going to be required on each of these lots. So the easiest way to do this is to come in with the one plan, covering the whole thing, having those mass deviations, and then the plot plans that we receive for each house will become kind of the final plan for each of those sites. And it's a little different than when we have commercially planned districts in that case.
Mr. Ham?
I think everything makes sense with the deviations and why we have to do this. Is this how, kind of like what we were doing when we had to go based on lot sizes and having to accommodate the different size because the lots were smaller, and this is basically the same thing?
Yes, it, as we're going down to that fifty-foot wide lot, which was approved previously in the old, in the old plats that are of record, as we go down to those fifty foot, those design details become a little bit tighter. And the homes themselves, as they're designed, are good homes, they're solid, we like the elevations of them. It just doesn't give us the wiggle room to get those kinds of facades or those kinds of plans in place. The driveway parameter is pretty, pretty harsh, considering that you only get seven and a half feet, that's a single car drive and garage, if you're lucky, if they approach, right, you can get that car in there. Generally, a parking lane on a street is eight feet, eight to nine feet. So you're dealing with something that's roughly equivalent or slightly smaller, so that is problematic. I will say that we are reviewing a lot of these districts and building type design elements right now to try to see where we may need to make adjustments moving forward so that we don't have to come back necessarily with these types of deviations. So that is the hard part when you're at that fifty-foot lot level, you try to put all the combinations together, they don't always work very well.
Yeah, that was clarification on that, I just wanted to make sure this sounded like something we've seen before, so everything deviations, considering the adjustments, makes sense to me, so I just need clarification.
Absolutely, yeah. For sure. Mr. Hanson?
No questions.
Mr. McNear?
Just one thing, if I remember right, this, we had spent a fair amount of time with this back in two thousand and twenty, if I remember correctly. And at that time, we had considerable discussion about the front facades, is that correct?
I'm gonna let last answer because I wasn't here in two thousand and twenty, but this discussed, it was just boring, so.
He was just new at that time.
Yeah.
Yes, we did go over this quite a bit back then. I think at the time that they were trying to consider joint drive accesses, but the market, the market really doesn't bode well for shared drive accesses for single-family houses, maybe duplexes or, you know, single-family attached, of course. But this really is a typical subdivision, it's just on a little tighter lots. And again, as Dave explained, with the fifty-foot wide lots, you know, having a seven and a half foot wide driveway, or, when's the last time that you saw a house for sale that was just a single garage? The market doesn't sell very well with those.
So it is the one that I remember from a couple of years back, where we were trying to figure out how to separate a joint driveway, the easement issues and all that kind of stuff that went along with it.
That's correct.
The primary reason for this, just simply because we've got narrower lot sizes, this is just for everybody else's benefit, that that just make, the price of land is going up so high to get the density for developers to do this, they're gonna, we're gonna start seeing more and more of these types of lots, is that correct?
You may see some of this, but this is really a special, kind of a unique shaped piece of property. It's infill housing. If you look at the, from back, from the presentation, the northern leg of this development is extremely narrow, and there's just literally no way they could have developed, they could have developed housing that had double frontage, we don't like that. The other alternative, again, is to shrink down the houses to a compact neighborhood or neighborhood house that would allow houses on both sides of the street instead of, you know, putting the road right directly behind some of the residents on Highland or Saint Johns. You know, again, it was just a way of working with the developer, working to try to get infill housing into this, again, unique piece of property.
Yeah, as I remember, there was a kind of a piece of the middle that made it difficult to work with.
Yeah, okay, that's all I have. And I'm gonna go ahead and just quickly add to your comment that I think we are seeing a trend towards smaller lot sizes, again, as housing costs have gone up, so trying to find creative ways to do this, and Bob's absolutely correct, you know, the shared drive scenarios and that, it's nice to allow that for flexibility in case somebody wants to develop that way, but this would have forced that to happen on every lot, and that is not necessarily a desirable aspect in this marketplace currently in this context. If we were inside of Kansas City, Missouri, somewhere, you might see this happen periodically, but where we're at at this point in time is, we're still a suburban community, but is also wrangling with the idea that lot sizes are getting smaller, houses are getting smaller potentially, how does this play out when the market's demanding certain features? So there'll probably be adjustments to the code that we'll be suggesting in the coming months on this.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Juneman?
Yeah, my only comment, Dave kind of hinted at it, just, I think it's the second time I've seen this since I've been on the commission, so it'd just be interesting to see if it's something we need to look at in the code in the future.
I don't have any other comments either, just, you know, echoing, this is a challenging piece of land, so good to, good to see we were able to accommodate, you know, a smart and correct, it's a good thing. So we don't have any other questions or comments from the commission, I will take a entertaining motion on the side of it.
I'll make that motion. After review of application Z dash two-two dash zero-four and the associated preliminary development plan, PDP dash twenty-two dash zero-two for Brecken, Breckenwood Creek, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the request to rezone thirty-eight point six acres from R-two, parentheses, two-family residential district to RP-two planned to family residential district, subject to the following condition, approval of deviations as presented upon acceptance by staff of review of revised plan documents reflecting the approved deviations.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion made by McNear with a, second by Hanson's. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six, zero, with all. Regular.
I was gonna say, just for the public record, then this will go to the city council, I believe on June twentieth, it'll be their second meeting in June that they will look at this and consider your recommendation for possible approval. I also, just for clarification, I know with the new commissioner members, just wanted to add, understand when we do these planned districts, the plan becomes that regulatory type document which allows the deviations to occur, so that's something I know we've had in some previous meetings, I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that the same way, so.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Regular agenda item number two, Prairie Brook Villas, final plat FP dash two-two dash zero-five, north of west, one hundred and seventy-four street along the east side of Kill Creek Road. Presentation from staff this evening.
It's kind of deja vu night tonight, isn't it?
What's that?
Here's a, here's another plat that you guys have seen in the past as well. Again, I do Prairie Brook Villas, I consider a fourteen point zero-two acre, seventeen lot, multifamily residential development. Just like the last one, the subdivision is kind of an unusual case, the final plat was approved by the plan commission back in two thousand and twenty for sixteen of a total twenty lot subdivision. The plat, however, was never recorded. Then it was brought back before the commission and council in March of this year to include the entire twenty lot development. However, it was discovered that the developer's federal permit to relocate the adjacent stream had expired, and that the new regulations would be too difficult to obtain a new permit under the current federal guidelines. Since the recent metal, we've been working with the developer on a new layout that could keep all the buildings out of the stream corridor and maintain the current level of density within this development. So this, this, I just wanted to kind of include the old layout as it was presented back in, back in March. The original lot layout included twenty lots, eighteen fourplexes and two duplex lots on, on the fourteen point zero-two acres, which had also included a cul-de-sac at the end of one hundred and seventy-third court. Fast forward to today, the new layout, the new layout includes seventeen lots and two tracks, all on the original fourteen point zero-two acres. Again, there are several changes from the previously approved plat to the original. The new layout changes the cul-de-sac to what is called a hammerhead street. A couple of other changes occurred as well to several lots, the original lot eight and nine were combined into one lot, and the building, and the buildings were reoriented on the lots to face an interior court. Lots ten and eleven were combined into one lot as well. All the changes to the lots were done in order to keep everything out of the sixty-foot wide stream corridor buffer. The density has not changed, only that one cul-de-sac and a couple of lot lines. Staff finds the plat, final plat is in substantial compliance with preliminary plat and the land development code, and is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. The request for final plating is consistent with the established goals and policies of the city. Staff recommends approval of the final plat for Prairie Brook Villas final plat with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion.
Great, thank you, Bob. And if we have the applicant with us this evening, if there's anything you'd like to bring forward to the commission, please, first podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you have your questions, that's cool. Appreciate your time.
Kevin Inyard, five-two-one, Northeast Station Drive, Lees Summit, Missouri. I'm actually representing the owner, applicants are engineer issue consultant, unless you have any questions for me. This all has to do with the Corps of Engineers permit, change of administration, so I appreciate you hearing it again. permit, change of administrations, so I appreciate you hearing it again.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Okay, we have both presentation from staff, we've got the applicant here, so I'll just go ahead and start down my right. Commissioner Sosa, anything to bring up, questions, comments?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Hanson?
No, I remember this, and I remember us talking about the stream at the last meeting, so I'm fine with everything, the changes made to accommodate now, so I have no questions.
Great. Mr. Hanson?
No questions.
Mr. McNear?
No questions.
Mr. Juneman?
I'm good.
And I don't have any questions either. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the side of you.
Oh. I'll be glad to make that motion. You give those thousand dollars.
After review of application number FP dash two-two dash zero five, a final plat for Prairie Brook Villas, first plat dated February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, and staff report dated May twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, the planning commission approves the application as proposed and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements provided the following conditions are met. One, the construction plans for any utilities, infrastructure, or public facilities shall meet all technical specifications and public improvement plans shall be submitted and approved prior to the release of the plat for recording, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements. Two, provide thirty-foot wide access easement to accommodate a public trail per the Parks Department recommendation. Three, label the stream corridor buffer area and provide a note on the plat that no development or land disturbance will occur within the buffer area per the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Perfect. Great, we've got a motion made by Commissioner Hanson with a second by Commissioner Sosa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor, six to zero. That concludes our regular agenda item. I don't know if we have anything from staff as far as discussion items this evening.
Just a couple of things you noted that in your consent agenda this evening, we did add one of the final plats. The second one would have been added to this, but as we've been going through stormwater calculations and that, we did not place it on consent because we were waiting for some information today. Once that made the clearance, I just wanted to have the flexibility in case we had to pull the item, so that's why that did not appear on the consent agenda. You'll find that we're gonna continue doing that with some of our final plats and things that are pretty routine, you'll see those more on the consent agenda, which will open up hopefully more time when we have a public hearing items, those kinds of things to discuss. So try to be a little more efficient in that. Even when it's on a consent agenda, as you noted tonight, and I just reiterate, when the chair asks you if you do have a reason to pull one or you have a question, don't be afraid to pull it, to ask that question. It's pretty routine, we get it at council meetings periodically with consent items where a council member has a question or something that they're asking, so they just ask for that approval, and we do a separate vote on that item after there's that discussion of the question, so. Couple of things, I think last month you heard us talk a little bit about reappointments and appointments to the planning commission, we have three members who have reapplied for their positions, and there were two other citizens that have applied for planning commission members for appointments, they only have three slots, so there is a committee of council members that gets together that reviews those applications and will conduct interviews as they see fit to make their reappointment. So at this point, no reappointments have been officially made, but the applications are in, the city clerk is handling that process. Hopefully, we'll know something before your next meeting, that's kind of the goal, but we are somewhat dependent on that interview committee from the council getting all three of those people together to conduct the business they need to, so whatever's on their calendars and schedules indicates that. That delays kind of our elections for officers, and what we don't want to have happen is to have somebody who gets reelected but then may not get reappointed, or vice versa, whatever kind of happens here. So we're gonna hold the elections off until we have those reappointments done officially and they're in place. With that also, I'm gonna tell you that you can anticipate somewhere in the next few months, I'm gonna probably bring some bylaw changes forward to you so that we don't get into these kind of conflict scenarios where we've got people getting reappointed but then elections do. Prefer to have a full commission say you did when they make those elections. This is kind of a weird situation because we have three people with the same exact date basically of a reappointment, so that creates an odd scenario, so I know we've already talked with Spencer and our legal advisors on this a little bit about how do we get this so that we're stair stepping the appointments a little bit more. It seems like what's happened over time, the appointment date that somebody was officially appointed became the start of the term, but in a lot of cases, what you're doing is you're backfilling some other term, and I don't know why or what reason all three came up at the same time, other than that kind of generic date of saying, you know, this started on the first, it just was unfulfilled for five months. Somehow we lost sight of it, the city lost sight of the idea that really it's a term start and end date that starts your two-year or your three-year period, whatever that is, versus starting it on the exact date that you're reappointed. So kind of odd, I'm not used to having a commission that way, I usually have staggered terms, and it's usually no more than two of the members that are coming up for reappointment at the same time, and maybe staggered by years, two, two, and two, but having three is kind of odd because you're getting close, yeah, you're kind of getting close to that norm level, and that creates some odd scenarios, so we will probably have some bylaw adjustments that are gonna come forward to you on things like this to get our calendars straight and get things done, but that'll be done with discussion with you all once we get something drafted, so just be aware of that. The only other item is, I will be, starting next Monday, I'll be out of, out of the office for two weeks, I'm heading for vacation, and I won't be bothered.
Good.
Just this is the way it is, when I'm on vacation, I won't be bothered. I'm gonna be far enough away that, we'll just put it this way, if you do try to bother me, I'm, I'll be in such a different time zone that I won't be responding. It's just the way it will be. So I'll be gone during that period of time. Amy Nasta will be in charge of the department during that time, she's the deputy city administrator. Bob will be in charge of the planning side of that thing, but Amy's really there in case there are other issues that come up and items for the operations of the department, so. We did hire Jesse Hunter, who was the intern, you've seen him in a couple of meetings, his start date was May sixteenth, he just happens to be gone today and tomorrow, he had a family trip that was already set for these two dates, but he has been in the office now for about a week, week and a half, and has been doing a good job for us, so you will see him more frequently at these meetings as well, once we get into the swing of things. Trying to think, Bob, you've been, you're not going on any trips for a while, are you? Like years?
No, I can't because everybody else is.
Right. I agree, Bob.
What a guy.
Well, you know, if he keeps improving his presentations, he'll get to go on vacation eventually, so just leave it. Yeah, all right, so, but if you have any questions, we're ready for questions, if you have anything.
Just gonna glance around, do you guys have anything back for staff? Okay, looks like we're good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
You beat you to it. You did, yeah, motion to adjourn made by McNear with a second by Juneman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.